Welcome to the July, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Orange Government Access Television Committee. I'm the chairman Saul Silverstein. We have with us tonight Chris Kelly, Assistant Coordinator, Mike Muddit, committee member, Dan Fitzmorris, committee member, Josh Olinsky, committee member, Marlene Silverstein, Secretary, Robert Lim, committee member, Gary Del Piano, committee member, and our coordinator is having some technical difficulties trying to log in, so we may, he may show up audio only in a little while. So the first item on our agenda tonight is comments and questions. Does anyone have any?
I'm here.
You've got an echo, Ron.
This is terrible.
Turn your speaker off on your phone, Ron.
Leave the meeting on your computer.
Turn off the computer.
Ron, turn off the meeting on your computer. Thank you. That I think might have fixed it.
That's one too.
All right.
I do have.
Are there any questions and comments? Robert?
No.
Rob's got one.
Yeah, so I noticed on the website, which that is the Orange Town website, the OGA page has been updated, so thank you. It also says the committee meetings are the first Thursday of every month, so I'm wondering if we should fix that.
Yeah, we should. They're, they're, they used to be always on the first Thursday, and then because of the difficulty in getting the coordinator report materials together and get the, getting the report written, we made it that we would have the meetings after the sixth, after the sixth of the month, whether it was the first or second Thursday. But I think most of the meetings are now the second Thursday. So you've made a good point, Robert. We should probably change the website to say first or second Thursday of the month, or just go straight to second Thursday of the month.
Absolutely.
So besides.
Oh, Chris, you'll take care of that?
Yeah, I can take care of that. Are we gonna do, are we gonna switch it to the second Thursday?
We've already published the schedule for the entire year, because we have to supply that to the, the town clerk on the, in, in November and December. So that's already in for next year, so the schedule is set.
And there are some that are on the first Thursday?
There may be one or two on the first Thursday. I will check and we can always cancel those and, and reschedule for the second Thursday if we have to.
All right, let me know what you wanted to say. I could change it.
Well, we have the same problem.
What? Not with the second Thursday.
It's a second Thursday. A holiday or something like that, you will have the same problem.
It's not, well, the second Thursday. I don't think there's any holidays on a second Thursday in a month, other than that are on none, as far as I know. So I don't think that's gonna be an issue. And if there is an issue, we can always cancel a meeting and reschedule it.
There you go.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, just a follow-up on the email to, oh, what's her name? Hold on, hold up.
Esme Lombard?
Thank you. Yeah, she, she's not on the agenda, is she?
Not, not officially unless she shows up in some of the other things.
No, I just wanted to know. I did not get a reply from her, so it's not like she, I know I CC'd Marlene, Saul, and Ron on the last email asking for an update on December fourteenth, but I have not received an update.
I, I sent her an email for CAC, and I got a response back that she is not there. She's either on vacation or something. So I can check it out if you want, Mike, and see if there is. You know, sometimes she says, if you can't reach me, contact so-and-so. If you want me to look and see and send that info to you, I will.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just also send another email saying, please, looking for an update here, just to keep it going.
Okay.
Yeah, that had to do with their, their fiber service not showing the OGA channel. That whole last discussion. Chris, I don't see us on YouTube still. I don't know if you're broadcasting through YouTube or not.
It's working on my, it's working on my computer just fine.
Really?
Yep.
I don't know what's going on here. There we are. Nope, still not.
It's okay, let's move on.
All right, we'll move on. Approvements of the December fourteenth meeting, so I've sent you all the minutes. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Gary, I need a second.
Second.
From Mike, thank you. Is there any discussion of the minutes of the last meeting? No? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And abstentions, I think Josh has to abstain then. Dan, Dan, Dan abstained. He was not officially a member at the last meeting. Okay, thank you.
He still has to abstain until.
Yeah, he abstained, just abstained.
Sorry.
Cool. Thank you. Uh, the budget. So I sent you all a copy of the budget, two budgets, actually, there are two pages. The first budget page is the year-to-date budget report for the town-funded portion of the budget. Our budget for the year, which goes July first to June thirtieth, is seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, and to date we have spent thirty-eight thousand six hundred seventeen of those dollars. So it's about fifty-three percent, and since we're six months into the fiscal year, that's about right. Any questions on the town-funded portion of the budget? Nope. Okay. Next, uh, next budget I sent you was the Cable Advisory Council Grant Budget. We were granted thirty-five thousand ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents. We have spent it all. We have bought a bunch of equipment. Um, and so that budget is completely expended. Uh, if you look at the first two lines, there's an interesting two items. It says minus ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, and then ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. That was an error, some, some of, um, um, there was an item we bought, uh, that was not part of the CAC grant that got charged to the CAC grant, and I made the Finance Department aware of it, so they corrected it, and that's why you see that negative, the positive and the negative there, so that's what it is. Any questions on the CAC grant budget?
Um, I don't have a question about this current year's budget, but I do have a question about the twenty-four to twenty-five budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, my, my understanding is that the budget would have been submitted already, so, um, for, I presume that happened last year sometime.
Yeah, that, I think it's, I think it was due December, either December first or December fifteenth, or very end of November, and it was submitted already, and I think we, I'm going working from memory. I don't have my files with me. Um, I believe we asked for, I think, the same.
I believe so.
No, there was an increase because so, so some of the salaries got increased, so that the finance director actually increased the amounts we were asking for.
But we weren't to touch the salaries. They do that as part of their own.
They do the salaries, right.
So I think that, so I think it's, it's probably bigger. I would have, um, searched through a few records to find out what we asked for, if you're interested in that, Robert.
I, I think it'd be helpful for, for the new members.
I, I will.
Help us understand.
Yeah, I will make a note to send everyone a copy of what we requested, so you'll have it. We did discuss it. We did discuss it. I thought we discussed it at one of the meetings you were at. I think you were, you were a guest at a meeting, and I, we might have discussed it at that meeting.
Um, yeah, probably, November. I can't remember if we talked the exact numbers, but yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on the budgets? Nope. Okay, uh, coordinators' report. Might be easier. I sent it off to everyone. It might be easier if I go over it. So it seemed to be kind of a slow month rest. We only had like seven programs still for the month. Um, town plan and zoning, uh, live and, and recorded. Uh, the holiday tree lighting and tractor parade, which is recorded and then broadcast after the fact. Uh, the Board of Selectmen live and recorded, and then the Board of Ed live and recorded, and then a bunch of, uh, prior year and prior uh, month, uh, programs were shown. The total program count for the month was only about fifteen. There a reason why it was a slow month? It was just December holidays or?
I think it had to do with that, yeah, mostly. Lot of cancellations.
December is always slow.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the total, the total number of meetings for the first six months of this year, we've had sixty meetings, uh, eight other events, special events, for a total of sixty-eight, and if you project out the sixty-eight for a full year, it's a hundred and thirty-six, which is kind of on the light side. Uh, typically, we're well over a hundred and fifty, close to a hundred and eighty programs during the year. The next section is the disc sets played this month, and that just shows, uh, each program shown at, at the top of that page as a number, and, and the, there were three sets of program changes. So on December ninth, program set number fifteen seventy-three was played, and that shows, uh, the numbers, the item numbers are the numbers that are listed at the top of the page. Same thing for the program changes made on December seventeenth and December twenty-first. Uh, last meeting, Robert, you suggested that we put in a section of um, o- o- on the coordinator report that asks, uh, that shows if there are any special events scheduled, and that has been added. Uh, Chris, uh, at the time that the report was written, did not have any special events scheduled. Are there any scheduled now, or we still?
Nothing scheduled as far as I know. No, but I will let you know.
So I believe the two that I'm aware of that are coming, not that they're necessarily scheduled to be covered. I believe the all-day Board of Finance budget meeting is February second. This is the last date I heard on that. And then there's the big Fred Wolf Park public hearing.
So the, the, the budget workshops, which are held like weekly with the different departments, uh, we don't cover those. Um, they're, they're kinda, I thought we were gonna do that once, and they, they're, they're really just working meetings. Um, but we do always cover the budget hearing and the town meeting. So those, those pretty much get covered automatically. Um, they don't even have to ask us. Um, so they'll, they'll, that, uh, when we get the dates of those, I think we'll add them to the section of the coordinator report.
And Rob, the Fred Wolf Park meeting is in conjunction with the Park and Rec meeting. And we always film the Park and Rec meetings, so yes, that will be covered, and I guess I could have mentioned it as a special program, but because it was in conjunction with the Park and Rec, I sort of just treated it like a normal meeting that we cover.
Okay. Okay, if it's gonna be, um, if it's gonna be covered, that, that's great.
Is that, cause I, um, sorry, is that the same meeting though? Because it's not run, that, that committee is not run by Park and Rec.
It isn't. I don't know if it's, I think it's technically gonna be a Park and Rec meeting, and there might be, I, I don't know this for sure, but they're gonna hold this workshop um, during the Park and Rec meeting, so it might be an item on the agenda, but I'm not sure. I have to look into that. But it, there is a Park and Rec meeting scheduled for, for Wednesday, seven thirty, and we will be covering that, and that's the same, uh, meeting as this workshop.
So that's.
Two meetings in two different places, although that would be silly between those two boards.
No, same place, um, and as, yep, correct, January twenty-fourth at seven thirty.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, uh, Saul, I, I understand that we haven't traditionally covered the all-day budget meeting. I think the, the reason I bring it up is because um, every year there's a discussion about the AMD budget, and the vice chair, um, usually talks about what the Board of Finance has recommended for an increase in AMD. Um, and I believe it happens during that meeting, but the first time I read that number in one of his columns or whatever, um, I tried to figure out how he came up with that number, or how they came up with that number, and I just, it was impossible. Um, I think I asked like a bunch of people, and eventually I found somebody who talked to a member of the Board of Finance, but um, considering how much public dialogue there is around the AMD budget, I, I thought it might be of public interest, uh, to consider it.
I, a quick question on that. So I know there's an all-day budget workshop that they kind of go through all the stuff, but I thought they also broke off, especially the bigger ones, into workshops dedicated to like presentations by those certain boards, which I assume AMD would be one of those.
Generally, both Boards of Education have come before the Board of Finance separately.
Yeah, outside of that, all-day meeting, because I mean, yeah, a hundred percent, I think both school districts budget workshops would be interesting and definitely worth taping. I just don't know if the all-day meeting is the, is the right place for it, if, if that's where they're holding it.
Just for clarity, Rob, because I kind of know what you're talking about. Like, these are, these are meetings that are open to the public to begin with, so the question is, you, you know, you could walk into Town Hall and wa- watch this all-day meeting, which fundamentally is gonna be really hard for most people, especially if it's in the middle of the day, or or better yet, we could stream it or record it so that people could watch it later. That, is that the vibe you're getting at?
Yeah, that's, um, yeah, thank you. That's so much.
Yeah, especially if it's during the day, and that's what I'm getting. If it's just in the middle of the day, then it's practically impossible for somebody who works to come to a, a budget workshop about something they care about. So it does seem to make sense to do the recording then, even though it's long and perhaps uh, maybe, maybe less than, less than exciting, but perhaps, you know, it's an accessibility question.
It may also be a logistics issue for us to do an all-day meeting. Is it really an all-day meeting?
It's like, I think it's six hours, maybe.
Really? So I think that's.
I mean, it is an interesting meeting. I've attended part of it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think, I'm, I'm just kind of thinking ahead, and, and how would we cover that? It is a technical issue for Chris and Ron to deal with in terms of how would they cover something that's six hours long?
Do we have the money in the budget to cover that kind of a meeting?
What?
Do we have the money in the budget to cover that kind of a meeting? Six hours? That's six, that's six extra hours.
Yes, three, two extra meetings.
Six extra hours out of the total number, I don't think is a big deal for us. I mean, um, it's just that the logistics of, you know, you'd have to have switch-off camera people every few hours, or or just leave the camera on and go and.
You might just have to do something more simplified.
It's a technical issue for them to, to solve, and so I think it's something that you should start thinking about. Uh, if we're gonna do it, how are they gonna do it? What's the best?
We have to play it back. How do we do that for six hours?
Yeah, well.
It's gonna take up a whole rotation in the, in the programming. It'll be budget workshops all, all day.
Yeah, so, so the rotation, we show each program three times a day, three times in a twenty-five hour period. So there's, they're basically an eight-hour block of programs we show, so this would take up quite a lot of the block. Again, I don't think that's an issue. I see, I think, you know, we, I, these are all technical things that can be resolved, I think, and Chris and Ron have to, have to sit down and think about, can we do this? How shall we do it? You know? And, you know, uh, figure it out.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, so where does that, uh, leave us then? This, uh, Chris and Ron will investigate it?
I, I, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
Chris, you on board?
Yep.
Ron, you on board?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know the date of that meeting by any chance?
Um, I believe in November, they had it penciled in as February second. Um, let's see, I mean, I can reach out to somebody on the Board of Finance to, to confirm. Um, otherwise, their next meeting, I think, is the twenty-second. So it's probably better to, to reach out, unless you'd prefer to do that, Saul.
Okay. Can you front the date, and then Chris and Ron, take, look into how we can do that, please? Okay, thank you.
I will, yeah.
That was budget. Anything else on budget? Uh, that was coordinator report, actually, I guess.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, so continuing with the coordinator reports. Um, the statistics for December, on Tellview, we had a hundred and seventy law, seventy-eight live hits on video on demand on Tellview. We had twenty-six hits. On YouTube, combined video and live hit count was two thousand two hundred twenty-eight. A lot of people watching us on YouTube.
Yeah, I'll say.
Most of that was the tractor parade. It got a lot of hits.
I would think so.
I saw that.
Okay, uh, there wanna be, yes?
Where is that number, that, uh, that YouTube hit? Is that a very high number? Is that, you know, month to month, like, what, what's a traditional monthly YouTube hit?
I'm gonna say about a thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monthly about a thousand on YouTube.
Okay.
Uh, sometimes when there is some controversial event or a political event, or, you know, election types of stuff, it can get higher.
And I could even include a number, an average, on the report, if you want. Good, so that we have an, a monthly average, but it's up to you guys.
I think it would be interesting. I think also, obviously, our goal would be to just continually increase that number, so.
Absolutely.
It would, it would help to see that in the sense that it would let us know, are we taking the right steps to increase viewership across the board, so?
Absolutely. I know that the subscriptions to the YouTube channels are going up every month.
Um, do we, do we track that on the report? I don't think we do, right?
That was gonna be my wise comment, y'all. Josh almost took it from me. I think it's great, yeah. I, I was looking at it this morning. There's currently two hundred and ninety-two. But it would be great to see if that's moving or not on a regular basis. YouTube does a good job at giving us a lot of data, you know, to, to track, you know, fewer accounts and, and subscription, you know, progress, so I, I, that, all that information's accessible to, to put in the report.
Dan, we're up to two ninety-three. You're welcome.
Just doing my job here, Josh, just doing my job.
And, and in comparison, because I looked this up today for some reason, the town of Monroe, Connecticut's only at thirty-seven.
And then I was gonna see, not to really compare us too much, but Woodbridge, um, has had their YouTube channel for quite a long time. And I'm not sure what they're at right now. Let's see.
Three hundred and twenty-seven.
Three hundred and twenty-seven. So we're not doing too bad. They've, their, their channel's been around for almost twice. Uh, I don't know if, if it's twice as long, but but, no, we're, we're, you know, we're slowly reaching more and more subscribers every month, so I'll, I'll track that, and I could show that in the report. Thank you.
Without hijacking and, and taking us far off topic, it would be, I mean, I think it would certainly be worth investigating what are the methods that we are using to get greater outreach, to get greater, you know, depth of, of subscription, um.
I mean, honestly, I think we've probably been a more, if we build it, they will come committee um, since our inception, right? So I mean, obviously, having our, our information on the town website's been critical, adding our site to, um, CT Live, or sorry, Orange CT Live, or whatever that site is. Yeah. Um, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Saul, I know you and Gary have been on probably the longest continuously. Um, I don't think we've done a lot more outreach than just, you know, making sure we're in the right places as far as links.
Great.
That's pretty much it.
One thing that the town did that helps us out quite a bit, well, well, we'll see how that, um, goes as, as time goes on, but they added us an OGA button that takes us to our OGA page. It's right on the front page of the website, and it's, it's, it's big, and it's very, you know, it's, it's, uh, when you click on the front page, it's like right there, and that was a recent change. And I, I'm hoping that that has some impact on, you know, people, and when they visit the town website, you know, they, they're able to navigate to that, and eventually they'll land, land, land on themselves on the YouTube page, and and I know a lot of people prefer the YouTube over regular streaming on seventy-nine and whatnot, so hopefully, as time goes on, the website helps get more people to subscribe and, and directs people to the YouTube channel. But I'm sure there's other ways to.
Well, yeah, if you have other ideas.
Well, what about, uh, while we're updating the OGA page on the town website, just where it says YouTube channel, just invite people to, um, to subscribe for the latest updates.
Yeah, we can probably put that on our homepage or page.
A lot of frontier people use it.
So I'll, let me, let me just repeat what I think I heard. So, well, I think, Robert, you're suggesting that we put a little message there on the OGA page asking people who would subscribe to YouTube.
Um, yeah, where we link to the YouTube channel, we can just say, you know, don't forget to subscribe to get the latest for the town of Orange. Um, I don't know if you can put a widget there, actually, like an actual button that will let you do it, but.
I could look into that.
That'd be cool.
Okay. So basically, you're gonna invite people to subscribe to our YouTube channel.
And then YouTube will notify them when there's new meetings, and we go live.
Yeah.
And you could always put something on Channel seventy-nine that says, you know, like and subscribe, you know, put, and, and there's our continuity between programming that could offer a little ad to, you know, visit YouTube or something in the, like a ticker to, to do, to do that, and, yeah, that's a great, that's a great idea.
A little sign on the bulletin board with a lot of information, you know? Okay.
Yep, I will.
Thank you.
Chris, I'm happy to help with, uh, with, with that as well, wherever I can. That's something I'm interested in.
Absolutely.
I'm writing some notes, I'm sorry. Okay, um, next section of the report just lists the programs and the hit counts, uh, for this month and the prior month programs. And then the comments section, so this is kind of interesting. Usually the comments section of the report says everything in the studio is working fine. That wasn't true this month. Um, during the month, the status lights on the frontier equipment indicated a loss of connection to the frontier circuit. And Chris, uh, reached out to Frontier's head end to find out what was going on, and apparently they cut us off. Uh, they're, they, um, I guess they're putting in fiber service, and they, they dropped our T-one connection, which is what we use to, um, uh, send them programming. So, um, a field engineer came out to scope out the project, and they'll be back sometime in December to get everything back up. So I think you've spoken to them again since then, or what's going on with the frontier right now?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a call, and they're gonna come in and set us up with the fiber connection.
Okay.
Waiting for, for them to reach out and give me a date on that.
Wouldn't let that go too long. I would, you know, if they don't get back to you in like another week, I would just start pestering them. Now that you have your number.
Yep.
And no, no update on the Comcast circuit?
No update on that. That was supposed to have happened already, but uh, I can, you know, I could also reach out to them and remind them, or, you know, get an update on that.
Worries. Okay.
So what's the? What's the current situation with Frontier? Their, our, our channel's dark or?
We are dark. It is dark, yep. If you have Frontier, you're probably not, yeah, you're not getting anything from us.
So maybe you're watching it on, um, YouTube.
Right. Hopefully.
Or the town website.
Or the town website.
Yeah.
Do we traditionally not communicate such outages in any way?
Oh, like, um.
I don't know what alert there is. Like, I think there's like an alert ticker on the, the town website, or I don't know, just so people know it's we're aware of it, and they should look elsewhere for content.
Mm-hmm. It's a good idea. I was hoping it'd be back up by now, um, but no, it's probably a good idea to advertise that. I could put something on the channel to show that, um.
Yeah, just something like, we are aware that OGA is not currently going out over Frontier's video service. Please see YouTube or the town's website for, for meetings.
Of course, if they can't see it on Frontier, they may not know it's there, so.
Right, good point. But, yeah, I don't think this is like, raises it to the level of like, town alert, like use the, um, emergency broadcast system or something.
Probably at least put something on the crawl.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you can get that, if you're on the internet, you can get that by visiting our page, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it probably wouldn't hurt to put a little bullet on our page either, Chris. Yeah, I mean, it probably wouldn't hurt to put a little bullet on our page either, Chris, on that one, like just a little notification.
Yep.
Well, I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't put it on the cable vision because the cable, if they have Frontier, they're not gonna be watching cable vision.
Yeah, absolutely right.
So you should put it on the website. That's it. That's just on the website. I mean, that's the only thing. And you really think there's that many people missing us on that channel? I don't know. There are.
I'd say it's probably more telling that none of us got any comments about the being down in Frontier.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So. So the thing is this, we've got it, we've got to take ourselves seriously here. We're, you know, we 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 are trying to increase the size of our footprint. However, the footprint is small right now and it's uh getting bigger and we've got to remember that if we're trying to, if we're trying to reach people on Frontier, we're not gonna reach them on Cablevision. And the same thing goes for the others, the other services. That's my opinion. And that and that and three bucks will buy me a cup of coffee McDonald's.
All right. Okay, so you can put a, if you can put a blurb on the town website, that would help.
Put it on our page.
Our page, yeah. Thank you. Um. The rest of the report, it says, all the items purchased using this year's Cable Advisory Council grant were received and the final invoice is paid. That happened in December. The program request form was updated on the town website to include the changes approved at the last OGAAP meeting. Okay, anything else on the coordinator report? Okay, let's move on. Uh, next item is.
You need to make a motion to approve.
Ah, reminding me. Gary, Gary made the motion. Do I have a second? Robert, raise the hands. Second, all in favor of approving your report? Say aye.
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 Uh. Down to the unanimous to me. Thank you. Next item is the bicentennial activities. The only thing I know that was going on is Chris was making one more video. Did that finish yet or still?
No, it's been, it's been put on the back burner for now.
On the back burner. Do you have a plan for when it goes back on the front burner or?
Um, yeah, I was gonna pick that up with Judy. Um, and and she uh, we haven't met. So I'm not really sure when we're gonna pick that back up, but we were gonna meet again and we had some ideas for some B-roll footage to add into the video. Um, so when we meet again, we'll figure out what we need and hopefully capture some more shots and finish that up.
Okay. All right. Um, that's it for bicentennial action items. It's the same three that have been there for a while. They're basically updating pers- updating procedures that are used in the studio. Um, that's kind of an ongoing thing.
Hmm. Yeah, that's still, I'm working on that. I I will have some uh some material to show um for next month. I'm currently drafting the procedures and updating them.
Okay. So we'll expect something at the February meeting, which will probably also be via Zoom since I may not be around. And I know Gary won't be around.
No, I will not.
Okay, um, Cable Advisory Council Grant, uh, we just sent in their co- coordinator put the last grant is complete. Um, when is the next grant coming out? Now I'm asking our secretary since she's on the committee to.
Since I am the grant administrator, yes, it will be coming out in February as usual.
In February. So next month, we should get her um the application forms for the next grant. So Ron, Chris, and the rest of the committee, if there's any equipment you believe we should be getting via the grant, please bring it to the next meeting.
And if I recall, we could also include um funding for people as well.
Yes, um, we we hesitate to do that. We have funded people in the last in 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 prior grants. Uh, it's just, um, it's hard to write, it's hard to document it all when when I have to write the report, I have to write a report every year on how we spent the grant funds and I'd like to have it all spent before we have to write the report. And when you, when you use it to pay for labor, that usually doesn't happen. Uh, but it's not an issue. It's not a problem that we can't do it. We just, we'd rather buy equipment than people, but uh if we if we don't have a lot of equipment to buy, we might go ask for more labor money instead.
Yeah, it is allowable.
Yeah, we've done it in the past. Anything else? Nope. The cat grant is done. Um, the equipment inventory, uh, I don't believe we have purchased anything since we finished the grant and we then then we bought some gaffer tape that was originally gonna be part of the grant, but was taken off the grant because we spent the grant money anyway without it. Uh, but we did get the gaffer tape and pay for that. So that's all set. Um, and the equipment inventory is up to date uh with all the new equipment that we got on the grant and any equipment we bought off the grant. Non-consumables, that is.
Mike, you're muted there. I don't know if you're trying to say something.
Sorry, I was just verifying we did not inventory the gaffer tape, right?
No, 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 no. It's a it's a consumable. We wouldn't, we wouldn't inventory that. Um. Committee vacancies, we still have one. Um, now, before the meeting started, Chris was telling me that someone contacted him with some interest in joining the committee. And Chris had called the person back, but um, left a message, did not get a response. Chris is going to call that person again and see if that person is still interested or not.
Yeah, I mean, I would send them right to the first selectman, right? Because that's where they gotta go.
He's got, basically telling me, contact the first selectman's office.
I think I pointed him in your direction, Saul. I might have given him your contact. Um, but I will, if I talk to him again, uh, I'll make sure he contacts first selectman's office.
If he wants, if he wants to contact me, he can contact me. Um, um. Not an issue. So, but, you know.
I just, if you, if you get a call from a random number, it could possibly be him, but I haven't heard back from him either. So maybe I'll try him one more time and see if he's still interested.
All right, good. Um. That's it from vacancies. Item ten, program request form update. It has been updated and we discussed that before. Uh, policies and procedures update. So I did send everybody a draft of the changes to the OGAAP policies and procedures.
For the purpose of discussion, Saul, I'll make a motion that we approve the policies and procedures as drafted.
Okay, um, second to that? Anyone? I see Josh came up, put his hand up first, or Josh gets the second. Uh, okay, discussion?
Any changes?
So, uh, I think I, I think I had these in the last meeting too. So all the changes are shown in red. It's basically uh added one section to the procedures uh regarding the internet methods of program distribution. We did not have internet on there and so we put that down as a method of program distribution. Um, and we also uh in that on that page of the procedures also added something about the uh the program request form being available on the town website. Uh, and then after that, it was uh page three of the procedures, uh, basically what we uh uh, the methods that we uh will provide our programming and DVDs and other media. It used to say, I think, VHS tapes there since no one uses those anymore. We placed it with other media. Uh, and then we uh put uh the pricing down for DVDs and flash drives. Uh, and we set the DVD price at thirty dollars per DVD and thirty-seven dollars for the price of a flash drive if we give it to a person on a flash drive or a DVD. Um. And then in uh uh, there was one place, the very last paragraph of the procedures talks about precedence. And it says, if these procedures aren't conflict restrictions placed upon the committee and or OGAAP by Cablevision of Southern Connecticut, comma cable, uh, presence is Cablevision, we added or its successors, because we don't know that Cablevision will always be the main company. Uh, so we added that in there.
Altice.
Um, and then that's pretty much the changes. Is there any comments, questions, or any other recommendations for changes?
I think we should call it Optimum.
I think.
You think we should call it Optimum?
No, I think we reworded it as Altice USA. I thought it was in there already.
Oh, did you? Did we change it to Altice USA?
Altice USA is the company name. Optimum is a brand name for these, for the cable service.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Altice is, I thought we had talked about that last last meeting.
We may have, and um I may have missed it in my notes.
No problem.
So we should change to the Cablevision of Southern Connecticut to Altice USA?
Hold on, let me just find out the real name.
I mean, we're we're covered because we talk about the successors, but yeah.
Successors, which is one of the reasons.
Yeah, it's called Altice USA Incorporated.
Yeah, Inc. All right.
Um, so while we're updating that part, we have um just with the its successors, we have an it apostrophe and then and the just ITS, but I think.
Oh, yeah, it's different in the two times it's mentioned, isn't it?
But yeah, without the apostrophe.
Yeah, it can have the apostrophe.
Um, similarly, on page one, uh, item two, methods of program distribution, where the internet part was added, which is a good um addition. Uh, there's kind of a hanging out C, I think just needs to be removed.
Excuse me?
Like there's uh, there's a the C after it. So it's B internet and then C and there's nothing. I think that just needs to be removed. And then D capacity on other multi-channel services.
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
Um, page one.
Oh, page one, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So page one of the um revised one. So under methods of program distribution in the middle?
Yeah.
And the red line line with the internet?
Yeah.
Utilized. So immediately on the next line, you see there's the letter C?
Yeah. So there's. Mine says C capacity on other multi-channel services reserved for future use.
Oh, is that what, maybe my uh page's translation is is messing it up? Is that what everybody else sees?
Yeah, so I'll just share my screen for a second.
Oh, okay.
Share. There we go. So B internet, C capacity.
Okay, all right, never mind. It's pages.
We're good then.
Yep.
All right. So I think I will make those changes and then I will forward it to the town attorney. So he can take a look at it and see if he has any recommendations.
Is um, just how many pages total are there on this one?
So there's five pages. The first five pages are the are the policies and the last five pages are the procedures. There's actually two documents here.
Oh, okay, because it's saying page eight of five, like as you scroll through the bottom, it says page six of five, seven of five.
Yeah, there's two different documents in one.
There's two documents. Mine mine says one of one, two, three, one of five, two of five, three of five for the first document and the same thing for the second document. I'm not sure.
It's saying page, like it it doesn't reset after the into the second document. It just keeps adding the pages up to a total of ten pages.
Well, I don't know what you're looking at, but the printed document doesn't do that. It it actually says one of five, two of five, three of five, four of five, five of five, and then the second document goes the same way.
One.
As Mike.
I'm not seeing it that way. I don't know why.
Five, and then it resets. This is one of five again.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I trust that. I'm seeing something different on my end, but I must have something.
Chris, I saw the same thing as you, I think. I saw six of five, seven of five, eight of five. Yeah, I looked at it before, yeah.
That's strange.
Who knows?
Did I send it as a PDF or a Word document?
You said it's a Word document because it has track changes on.
So maybe it was your version of Word is doing that perhaps.
Well, if I download it, yeah, maybe because I'm looking at it um in in Google in my email right now. Maybe if I download it and do it, it's.
It's actually Word, yeah.
Yeah. Little technical glitch there, but and then just another question, um, for our retention. Um, I just, maybe this is just for clarification. Um. What's the difference? Um, let's see, where is it here? Retention?
I always have a problem finding retention. It's in here.
See.
It's page two of five.
Two of five.
Of the second.
Of the second one.
Of the one of five, yeah.
Of the procedures.
Yeah.
Retention of re- of recorded programs, page two, bottom of page two or five of the procedures, the second document.
Right. Oh, yeah. And by the way, it's showing up correctly on my uh in my Word doc, so it's probably the way I was seeing it in Google, but um the diff- so a departmental program versus a public meeting? What what would be an example of a departmental program?
So I think in the past, we've used that as like when we produce something with the first selectmen used to have fireside chats. Oh. The um, and we did something with the police commissioner once. So anything that we produce that's not a meeting, I consider part of that three-year program.
I see.
So if you look up, if you look up just to the previous previous section for editing of program content, part B departmental programs, any program prepared for or provided by a town department or agency.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I would even consider like the the bicentennial stuff. I would consider a departmental program.
Okay.
So I think when all this was written like twenty years ago originally or so, um, it was envisioned that departments could actually produce their own programs or ask us to record programs for them for internal use or, you know, to broadcast themselves. Um, so I think that's what they're talking about with departmental programs.
Some have. We we did stuff with like the library once. We've done a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, the library did some stuff once. You're right.
They don't really do it as much or it's not. Um. Yeah, we, there's not many of those as often, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That, that's the agenda.
Oh, I'll call for a vote.
Um, actually, I had a another question now that we're talking about it.
Go ahead, Robert.
Uh, procedures, page three, there's some reference to programs which are considered current. Um. Uh, first of all, it, that's kind of like not a complete sentence. Um. But so it's uh, C additional guidelines, number two.
Hmm.
It says programs which are considered current, and then it says, i.e. scheduled for cable cast or other public distribution may not be readily available for copying. I assume the parentheses belong somewhere else, but what, I guess, does anybody know what the intention of that?
So the original, when we recorded movies, we are in the movies meetings, we recorded them right onto DVD. So when they were in the DVD player playing, you couldn't copy them.
Oh.
Like when we were broadcasting them, they were in a five-disc changer going around a carousel. So we couldn't copy them until they were out of the rotation. So that was what that was originally meant for. Not so much an issue anymore. We could probably delete the whole line.
It's a good, good call there, yeah.
Yeah.
That was an old technical problem. Same thing with VHS. When we had VHS tapes, when the VHS tape was playing, we couldn't copy it.
Makes sense.
Yeah, fair.
This is why it's good having you, Mike, because I wasn't here when you were, you know, playing DVDs on a carousel.
Sarah would remember that.
All right. Um, I don't think there's any harm in leaving it in, but the paren- parenthesis is in the wrong place. You're correct, Robert. This this document was written by uh an attorney who was on the committee at the time.
Anne Marie Payon Mullen, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to say we might be delayed if we're like literally actively editing the program.
I I would just move the parenthesis, leave the the sentence in for now. My, that's my opinion. If anyone wants to remove it.
I mean, we say may not, we could say, may not, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
Good one, though, Robert.
Well, so we had a motion to review this already, all in favor of uh accepting the document as modified?
As modified, I'll take that exception or that change. And I guess the 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 part of the motion also should be to propose this to the town attorney and uh first, my board of selectmen for adoption.
Right. What for attorney for review and board of selectmen for adoption, right?
Yeah.
Well, after he reviews it, if he makes any changes, I want to bring it back, just so everyone knows what's going on. So it's, let's just send it to the town attorney for review and then we can talk about it after he reviews it.
I accept that change.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Staying? We're good to go. Thank you all. Staying, we're good to go, thank you all. Alright, that covers the agenda.
One update, Saul, because as I made, got back to me during this meeting.
Yes.
Um, she is blaming Ron, she said she talked to him and she thought I would, he would update us.
She talked to him?
Yep, she said, I spoke with Ron Davis and I thought he would update you, sorry for the delay.
Hey, Ron?
So I, I passed that on to, to you.
When?
It's like months ago, it wouldn't a couple of months?
Yeah, so she's, she, that's all news. We contacted her again after that discussion, because her discussion.
So she's just.
Was not, was not, her discussion with Ron did not resolve anything.
So.
Apparently she didn't get an email tonight, so she'll read it because she doesn't read her email during the day, so. Ron, uh, maybe, maybe Saul, you should send her an email tonight.
Yeah, I, so I, I asked, and so I'm gonna get a picture of the invoice or whatever, sorry, the bill from the customer that's complaining about this. Because she keeps going back to his level of video service.
Every level should have it.
I, I agree.
It, it has, yeah, so pegs, peg stations are supposed to be part of basic service.
That's my understanding.
That's the thirteen channels.
I think that's state and federal law.
Anything to get out of it?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay, so you, so what I heard, you're gonna contact her again, Mike?
I, I'm gonna contact the person that was complaining and get a copy of the invoice, you know, with their, some of their information blocked out and then. Send it off to her and so we'll have, hopefully end that topic forever.
Yeah, alright. Anything else? I will take a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Thank you, Robert.
Good job, Robert, proud of you.
Easing you out, Gary, that's very, very emotional.
Hey, you don't have to ease me out, all you gotta do is ask me to leave. I don't even have to be asked, I'll leave, that's no problem.
You, thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
And we will. The next meeting is February ninth, I believe.